Check us. Let us pray. Father, it is a delight to come together to hear from you through our study of the Bible. Speak to us. Give us listening ears and understanding hearts. Direct our eyes and minds to you in what we study tonight. Let the truth we find in your word shape our minds, hearts, and actions, so that we will become the people you want us to be. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. We continue our study of David, a man after God's own heart. Today's topic is David spare Saul's life twice. David spares Saul's life twice. And we shall be going through first Samuel chapters twenty-four to twenty-six. But I'm not going to read through because I believe that you have already read through those passages. David spares Saul's life twice. David, the young shepherd boy, was anointed king of Israel. But his kingship was not anything that would happen anytime soon after. Saul was still king, but he was jealous of David's accomplishments and reputation with the people and was determined to kill him. So for about fifteen years, he kept on pursuing David. And David was forced to flee from place to place, from cave to cave. Nevertheless, the time he spent as a fugitive was not wasted time. It was a time that God was using to mold and shape David to be the type of person he wanted him to be. God was training him to be the greatest king in Israel. In our last study, we saw how David narrowly escaped being captured by Saul, by the providence of God. Just when Saul was about to capture him, a messenger came to tell Saul that the Philistines had invaded the land. And Saul had to withdraw from pursuing David while David escaped to Enghedde. Now chapter twenty-four. This chapter opens with Saul getting the information that David was in the wilderness of Enghedde. So he gathered together three thousand men and they went in pursuit of David. As they came to a cave, Saul needed to ease himself. So he went into the cave by himself. This was the same cave where David and his six hundred men were staying. David's men thought that this was a golden opportunity for David to get rid of his enemy. In fact, they were sure that it was God that provided this opportunity. They said to David, this is the day which the Lord said to you, behold, I will deliver your enemy into your hand, that you may do to him as it seems good to you. First Samuel twenty-four verse four. It is doubtful if God ever said anything like that to David. At least, there is no such record in the Bible. When David's men saw Saul entering the cave all by himself, they wrongly assumed that this was an indication from God that they should act. But David was not going to kill Saul. All he did was to arise and secretly cut off a corner of Saul's robe. And even then, he still felt guilty. Excuse me. David had great respect for Saul as God's anointed king. In spite of the fact that Saul was trying to kill him, David knew that he will one day be king. But he also knew it was not right for him to kill the man God has placed upon the throne. God never directed David to remove Saul from the throne by killing him. Yes, David had been anointed to be king. But it was not David's job to take Saul away. That will be done by God in his own way and at the right time. David would have disobeyed God if he had killed Saul. Do not touch my anointed ones and do my prophets no harm. Psalm one hundred and five verse fifteen. Psalm one hundred and five verse fifteen. It is remarkable that David did not yield to the temptation that his men presented to him. His refusal was an act of courage. Courage to stand against his men and do what is right. What a great example for us. We must not compromise our moral standards by giving in to group pressure. David did not harbor any anger or bitterness in his heart towards Saul. What would we have done if we had been in David's position? How do we treat those who have hurt us? Our natural response is to want to avenge ourselves. When somebody hurts us, we feel justified to hurt them back. But God tells us that he is the Avenger. Vengeance is mine, I will avenge, says the Lord. Romans twelve nineteen. Repay no one evil for evil. Romans twelve seventeen. Saul deserved judgment from David. But David had mercy on him, just the same way we deserve judgment from the Lord for our sins. But he had mercy on us. After Saul had gone out of the cave, David went out of the cave and called out to Saul. Let's read what he said to Saul in chapter twenty-four verses eight to fifteen. Eight to fifteen. David also arose afterward, went out of the cave and called out to Saul, saying, my lord, the king. And when Saul looked behind him, David stooped with his face to the earth and bowed down. And David said to Saul, why do you listen to the words of the men who say, indeed, David seeks your harm? Look, this day your eyes have seen that the Lord delivered you today into my hand in the cave and someone urged me to kill you. But my eyes spared you. And I said, I will not stretch out my hand against my lord, for he is the Lord's anointed. Moreover, my father, see, yes, see the corner of your robe in my hand. For in that I cut off the corner of your robe and did not kill you. Know and see that there is neither evil nor rebellion in my hand. And I have not sinned against you. Yet you hunt my life to take it. Let the Lord judge between you and me and let the Lord avenge me on you. But my hand shall not be against you. As the proverb of the ancients say, wickedness proceeds from the wicked. But my hand shall not be against you. After whom has the king of Israel come out? Whom do you pursue? A dead dog? A flea? Therefore let the Lord be judge and judge between you and me and see and plead my case and deliver me out of your hand. David's words to Saul were very moving. Why do you listen to those who say I want to do you harm? Say today the Lord delivered you into my hands, I could have killed you if I had wanted. But I spared you. Look, I have the corner of your robe in my hand. But I'm not going to kill the Lord's anointed. Let the Lord judge between you and me. Is that your voice, my son David? Saul called David my son. Yet he had been pursuing him relentlessly to kill him. And if only for a moment, Saul seemed remorseful. The Bible says Saul lifted up his voice and wept. You are more righteous than I, he said. For you have rewarded me with good, whereas I have rewarded you with evil. He prayed for David for sparing his life. May the Lord reward you with good for what you have done to me this day. But Saul's remorse was short-lived, as we shall see later in this study. In verse twenty, Saul himself acknowledged the fact that David would surely be king over Israel. And he made a request of David. He asked David to commit himself by oath to preserve his family and preserve his name. Swear now to me, he said, that you will not cut off my descendants after me and that you will not destroy my name and my father's house. David swore. David kept his promise, as we shall see later in second Samuel chapter nine verses one to thirteen. Saul went back home. But where David remained in hiding. Obviously, he did not believe that Saul's expression of remorse would last. He was right. Saul soon returned to his pursuit of David. Chapter twenty-five is the story of David, Nabal, and Abigail. This chapter begins by telling us about the exit of one of the greatest prophets that Israel ever had, Samuel. Saul was king. But Samuel had been the nation's spiritual leader. He had been dedicated to the service of the Lord from his youth and had judged Israel for many years. Now that he was dead, the nation of Israel will be without this spiritual leadership for many, many years, until David became king. But the main story in this chapter is about David, Nebel, and his wife, Abigail. I think that the purpose of this story is to show us another aspect of David's character. For even though he was a man after God's own heart, the Bible does not make any attempt to hide his flaws. In this story, David did not respond to insult the way we would have expected him to. What he did was most unbecoming and irrational. After Samuel's death, David moved to the wilderness of Paran. There was a very rich farmer, Imeon, who owned thousands of sheep and goats. His name was Nebel. Nebel means fool. And we, as we shall see, this man lived up to his name. He was a very difficult man. The Bible describes him as harsh and evil. In contrast to this man's foolish nature was his beautiful wife named Abigail, who is described as a woman of wisdom. It was a time when Nebel was shearing his sheep, a harvest time, when everybody was happy and expected to be generous. David's men had provided services to Nebel's, Nebel's men throughout the time of shearing, protecting Nebel's men from raiders. Now David sent his men to Nebel on a fish day to ask him to give whatever he could to him and the young men for their services. David was polite in his request. Peace be to you, he said, peace to your household. Please give whatever comes to your hand to your servants and to your son David. When Nebel got David's message, he rudely refused to honor David's request to feed his men. Why? These men were not beggars. David was merely asking for a reward for their services. And Nebel was very rich and could easily afford to meet David's request. But listen to his words in verse ten. Who is David? And who is the son of Jesse? Did Nebel, did Nebel not know who David was? Of course he did. He knew he was the son of Jesse. He must have heard about his military exploits. But what Nebel was saying is, who does he think he is? And he added insult to injury by suggesting that David might be just another runaway servant. His words were enough to provoke anybody. Moreover, take note of how selfish he was in his reply to David's servants. In verse eleven of chapter twenty-five. Verse eleven. Shall I then take my bread and my water and my meat that I have killed for my shearers and give it to men when I do not know where they are from? The fellow has forgotten that all those things that he claimed as his own were really not his. They belong to God, the giver of every good and perfect gift. And we are expected to share whatever we have with others. We do not own anything. We are merely stewards, stewards of all God has gracious graciously given to us. Nebel reminds us of the rich fool whose story is told by Jesus in Luke chapter twelve verses sixteen to twenty. Luke chapter twelve verses sixteen to twenty. Then he spoke a parable to them, saying, the ground of a certain rich man yielded plentifully. And he thought within himself, saying, what shall I do since I have no room to store my crops? So he said, I will do this. I will pull down my barns and build greater. And there I will store all my crops and my goods. And I will say to my soul, Saul, you have many goods laid up for many years. Take your ease, eat, drink, and be merry. But God said to him, fool, this night your soul will be required of you. Then whose will those things be which you have provided? God called that man fool. That is what Nebel was, a fool, just like the meaning of his name. When David's men reported all that Nebel had said unto him, he told four hundred of them to guard on their swords. For he was determined to wipe out every man that belonged to Nebel in one day. And he would have done so had not Abigail, Nebel's wife, a man of, a woman of wisdom intervened. Nebel had provoked David by his insult. So he prepared for a fight. He wanted to teach Nebel a lesson. Murder was in David's heart. He had been insulted, yes. But this is not the way God wants us to respond when we are provoked or insulted. And to think that this was coming from David, who had just mercifully spared the life of Saul, his archenemy, who was bent on killing him. This response of David to Nebel's insult was unexpected and extreme. He would have wiped out all of Nebel's men all because, all because of the words spoken by the unguarded tongue of a foolish man. What a way to try to avenge oneself. We should always remember that God is the Avenger. When Nebel's men reported the incident to Abigail, especially how their master had insulted David, even though his men had been good to them, Abigail took immediate action. Taking matters into her, her own hands, she loaded donkeys with an abundance of food and wine and sent them ahead of her to meet David. When she met David, she dismounted quickly from the donkey, fell on her face, and bowed to the ground. Then she made one of the most beautiful speeches in the Bible. I'm going to read out her speech. It's from chapter twenty-five verses twenty-four to thirty-one. She fell at his feet and said, on me, my lord, on me, let this iniquity be. Please let your maid servant speak in your ears and hear the words of your maid servant. Please let not my lord regard this conjural, Nebel. For as his name is, so is he. Nebel is his name. And folly is with him. But I, your maid servant, did not see the young men of my lord whom you sent. Now therefore, my lord, as the Lord lives and as your lord, Saul lives, since the Lord has held you back from coming to bloodshed and from avenging yourself from you with your own hand, now then let your enemies and those who seek harm for my lord be as Nebel. And now this present which your maid servant has brought to my lord, let it be given to the young men who follow my lord. Please forgive the trespass of your maid servant. For the Lord will certainly make for my lord an enduring house. Because my lord fights the battles of the Lord. And evil is not found in you throughout your days. Yet a man has reason to pursue you and seek your life. But the life of my lord shall be bound in the bundle of the living with the Lord your God. And the lives of your enemies he shall sling out as from the pocket of a sling. And he shall come to pass when the Lord has done for my lord according to all the good that he has spoken concerning you and has appointed you ruler over Israel, that this will be no grief to you, nor offense of heart to my lord, either that you have shed blood without cause or that my lord has avenge himself. But when the Lord has dealt well with my lord, then remember your maid servant. Abigail's words and plea for forgiveness were enough to soften any man's heart, however hard. Her gentle words to David must have made great impression on him. Proverbs chapter fifty verse one, proverbs fifteen one says, a soft answer turns away wrath, but a harsh word stirs off anger. Abigail's acts of humility and submission were in strong contrast to her husband's provocative words. She presented the gifts and David was pacified. God had sent Abigail to prevent David from doing great injustice to Nebel's men. Nebel died about ten days later. And David took Abigail to himself as wife. Chapter twenty-six. David spares Saul again. David's Saul's remorse displayed in chapter twenty-four did not last. For as soon as the Zivites told him that David was hiding in the wilderness of Zeph, he pursued him with three thousand men. In verse five of chapter twenty-six, we are told that David and one of his men, Abishai, went out at night to where Saul and his men were encamped. Saul was sleeping within the camp with his spear stuck in the ground by his head, while Abner and all the people were encamped all around him. Saul was again at David's mercy. As far as Abishai was concerned, God was giving David another opportunity to get rid of his enemy. He asked David to allow him to strike Saul. David once again refused to stretch out his hand against God's anointed. Saul was divinely appointed as king of Israel and he would not assassinate him. After all, David had been assured that God himself would remove Saul and that David would be king at God's appointed time. and that David would be king at God's appointed time. He was not going to take God's plan into his own hand and do the things his own way. He knew that if God had intended something for him, he would bring it to pass in his own time and in his own way. What a great lesson for all of us. We must not rush ahead of God. We must learn to wait patiently for his timing. So all David and Abishai did was to take Saul's spear and the jug of water that were by Saul's head and get away. All this while, neither Saul nor his men knew anything or woke up because according to the Bible, a deep sleep from the Lord had fallen on them. When David got to the top of the hill on the other side, he called out to Abner and blamed him for not protecting Saul, his lord. Saul recognized David's voice and realized that David had again spared his life. He had again shown him the mercy of God. God wants us to forgive and show mercy and compassion to others as we want him to do for us. David's emotional plea to Saul was, why are you seeking my life? What have I done? I want to be among God's people to worship God. I'm tired of living among the ungodly. Let me return to my people. Saul replied, I have sinned. Return, my son David. For I will harm you no more because my life was precious in your eyes this day. I have played the fool and erred exceedingly. In verse twenty five, Saul ended with a prayer for David. May you be blessed, my son David. You shall both do great things and also still prevail. This was the last meeting between Saul and David. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the way you have spoken to us tonight through your word. Thank you for all you have shown us in our study of how David spared the life of Saul twice. Even though Saul was pursuing David relentlessly to kill him. Help us to be compassionate, kind and forgiving to one another, even as you have always been to us. And may your goodness and mercy continue to follow us all the days of our lives. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Join us next time as we shall continue with our study of David, a man after God's own heart. Please read first Samuel chapters twenty seven to thirty one in preparation for the teaching. Good night.